Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids Planning Commission meeting for tonight, November 21st, 2019. If you would all rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Fernelias, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Well, Commissioner Bradley.
President.
Commissioner Heikla.
President.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
Chair Casey.
Here.
And I should also note for the record that Chair Swartz is absent.
Thank you. I guess our first order of business is to adopt our agenda tonight.
Chair Casey, I propose that we adopt the agenda barring any modifications or changes by the council or by the commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. And the next order of business would be the approval of the minutes from the October 17th, 2019 meeting.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 17th.
Second.
And we have a motion by Schmalki and a second by Geisler to approve the minutes from the October 17th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. I was not at the October 17th meeting.
Okay. That passes with one abstention by Commissioner Knoblock. And moving on, Mr. Fernelias, would you like to hit us with your best shot?
I would be happy to. Madam Chair and Commissioners, good evening. As many of you are aware, I am pinch hitting this evening for our planner Scott Harlecker, who had a death in the family. He could not be here this evening, so our thoughts are certainly with him. So I ask both Commissioners' patience and certainly the public and applicants who may be here this evening that I'm doing my best to fill in in his absence. Obviously, he has a lot of the background, so we'll get through this, but obviously there will be some questions. So this first item-
Might I also ask for some leeway for the-
Absolutely.
-the sit-in chair, who's just the newbie.
I'm the sit-in legal also.
Sit-in.
Yeah, we have a number of people who are filling in this evening.
Thank you.
So I need to put up the PowerPoint if the folks back room could put that up. Thank you very much. So our first item tonight is a planning case 1921, which is a site plan and conditional use permit for a property at 1700 Coon Rapids Boulevard. This is a conditional use permit for a public school, and it is also a site plan for a building and parking lot additions, which we'll get into in just a moment. I've got a few slides that I will walk through the commission to describe a little bit of the background on this proposal. In terms of actions this evening, after I give my presentation, we'll provide an opportunity for the applicant, who I believe is here, to get up and, I guess, provide comments to the commission on this particular application. We will have to conduct a public hearing. The Planning Commission is really the body that'll make the decision this evening. If either the applicant or someone else wants to appeal the decision of the Planning Commission tonight, that can be done, but it needs to be done in writing within 10 days of tonight's action. A couple of housekeeping items, which are important, and I just wanted to highlight on the staff report. So all of the applications this evening are subject to our 60-day rule, which is a state statute, which means that we need to act within 60 days of receiving an application. In this case, we received this application on October 14th, which means that we need to approve or deny by December 13th. So we're within that window to do so this evening. A little bit of the background on this proposal. Some of you may know this as the old L.O. Jacobs School. Now it's currently used as the River Trails Learning Center. In terms of land use designation, it obviously is a public school. Our comprehensive plan designates this as an institutional use, and the zoning for the site is LDR-2, which is Low Density Residential 2. The project is bound by Coon Rapids Boulevard Service Road on the north, Grouse Street on the east, and Ibis Street on the west, just to kind of provide people who may be watching with a sense of where this is located if they're not familiar. I have a couple of pictrometry photos, so these are aerial perspectives that provide a sense of the school. This is from an easterly perspective, looking at the school, and this is from a west elevation. These will be relevant when we look at some of the building elevations, just to kind of give you a sense of what part of the building we're looking at. So in terms of the site plan and the application itself, this next slide shows the kind of the key elements of this particular proposal. As I mentioned earlier, this building was originally constructed in 1921 as L.O. Jacobs Elementary School. There have been a number of different renovations over the years. The current project involved, and so the existing building is primarily this footprint here. There are really three elements to this project. The first is this 19,330-square-foot addition, which is on the west side of the building. This will provide classroom space, I believe it's nine classrooms, and then support areas for the school. That's a one-story addition. There is also a smaller addition, kind of on the east side of the building, which is 1,840 square feet. This will be for, I believe, administrative offices and a conference room. And then the third component is some additional parking that will be constructed on the north side of the site. I should also point out that there are some areas that are going to be paved. I believe there is a walking trail on the west side of the property, but that's going to be taken out and reconstructed as part of this project. There'll also be some play areas along the west side of the building as well. Primary site access is provided, really in the location that is currently provided, on the east side of the site via the Coon Rapids Boulevard extension. So in looking at this application, this is really the site plan piece. This is the site plan analysis, the first application that you have this evening. There are a total of 11 criteria that we look at in terms of reviewing a site plan according to Chapter 11-325. I'm not going to go through each of those. We can certainly do that. However, there are some comments that I wanted to make specifically related to some of those issues that are in the site plan criteria. So as I mentioned, access and parking will be provided in its current location. There is no change. That's where it is right now. That will continue to provide the primary access to the site. There is a parking lot expansion, kind of an interesting thing that we discovered when this application was presented to us. Back in 1999, there was a parking lot expansion which incorporated Grouse Street, which runs through here. So there, at that time, there was a lease agreement that was negotiated between the city and, I believe, the school district. We think that that's going to require some type of an amendment since that parking is being expanded again. I don't think the original lease agreement contemplated that, so we'll have to address that issue, but that's separate outside of this particular approval. Parking for the site, currently there are 108 stalls. This project will involve the construction of 40 additional stalls, so there'd be a total of 148 stalls. It is important to point out that there is no minimum parking standard for schools, so we don't have a standard to necessarily compare what would be required maybe if it were a different use. Terms of the building elevations, this is another thing that we look at with regard to site plan approval. This is looking at the four different elevations. It includes the existing facility as well as the proposed addition. It's a little difficult to kind of tell what's what. The next slide that I have kind of shows, I think, a better depiction of what the addition, which is the area that's darkened in these elevations, what that will look like. In terms of materials, which is what we look at as part of our site plan review, we do look at materials to make sure that it's in compliance with our code. It would include a mix of traditional brick and brick detailing, divided light windows, and the brick itself would be brown in color to match the existing brick that's on the facility right now. Another issue involves landscaping. This is one of the plans that is included in their submittal. This is a removals plan. I just highlight this to, I guess, kind of point out how this impacts some of the landscaping. So the two areas that I've circled are areas where a number of existing trees are going to be removed in order to accommodate both the building expansion and the parking. And it's important to note then, as we shift to the landscape plan, and this is something that is noted in the report, that there are no, the plan that has been submitted does not include replacing any trees. That's not shown on the landscape plan that they submitted. Most of the landscaping will be replaced up in the area on the north end of the site. So there are some tree removals. Let me slide back for a second. So in this area to the west of the current school, where the expansion will take place, there are a total of, if you add up all these dots, 34 trees that will be removed. As I mentioned, the landscape plan does not identify any replacement. There are some site constraints, so there's a playground area as part of that expansion project. Let me go back for a second here. So there are some areas where those trees are going to be removed in order to accommodate the improvements that are contemplated as part of this project. I believe there also is a expanded drive aisle for buses, which is going to limit placement. So I think staff recognizes that those trees cannot be replaced on a one-for-one basis, so the recommendation is that about half of those, 17 trees in particular, would be replaced. I did have a conversation with, I believe it was the landscape architect, earlier today. We did discuss that. I think staff is open to the idea of where those might be located, but I think the important point is that, you know, there are a lot of trees that are going to be removed as part of this project, and it's important to replace those. In terms of specifically where they would go and what species of overstory tree, we're certainly willing to work with the applicant on that, but it is important that those trees are replaced. In terms of the, or replaced at the ratio that we've referenced in the report. In terms of the other area, which includes the parking area to the north, there are some trees that are going to be removed as well, although there is, I think, a more robust landscape plan. There will be a total of 21 overstory trees that are going to be removed in this area. Obviously, that is a function of some of the expanded parking and also some ponding that will be required, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But they are, I don't know that you can see that level of detail on this particular image, but in terms of what will be planted in certain locations in the ponds, they'll include shrubs and perennials, as well as ornamental grasses. Ornamental trees, kind of along Coon Rapids Boulevard up in this location here, as well as a red twig dogwood shrub will also be included as part of that landscape package. In the, near the entrance, there also are a couple of overstory trees that will be planted as well. And in the parking lot, where the peninsula islands can accommodate some kind of overstory tree, they will plant overstory trees in those locations. I believe it's noted that there are two locations where, or two peninsula islands where they will not have any type of overstory tree. And any other area that is disturbed as part of this project will be planted with sod, so they'll have ground cover in those locations. The last slide I had related to the, kind of the site itself, is the erosion control, stormwater filtration and ponding, and so they have a number of features. Obviously, when this building was originally constructed, there were, may not have been stormwater standards and guidelines. There are now, and anytime you expand a site, you have to deal with these issues, so they've provided for that stormwater capacity, both rate control and stormwater quality on-site. And our city engineer has looked at that. So that's related to the site plan. As far as conditional use standards, which we look at when considering a conditional use permit, a couple of things I wanted to mention about that. So schools are allowed in the LDR-2 district with a conditional use permit. When we were doing our research, I suspect it's a function of how old the building is, it probably predated our zoning code, we could not find a conditional use permit on file. Because there is a site plan application, because the building is expanded, we felt it was important to follow the current standard, which would require a conditional use permit, so that's why we recommended that the applicant apply for that, and we're going through that process this evening. We did review the conditional use standards under Chapter 11, 304.3, and I think we're satisfied that it meets those conditions for, not especially use permit, conditional use permit. What else do I have? So I think our recommendation this evening for the commission is to approve both the site plan and the conditional use permit, and we have a number of findings that are listed. We can get into those. But I guess at this point, that concludes the formal presentation that I had, and I certainly would be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time.
Commission, do you have questions for Mr. Fernelias?
Chair Casey, I have a question for Mr. Fernelias.
Sure. Mr. Knoblock?
The question, I have a few questions. The planning department, was there any in-depth or further analysis in regards to traffic flow from the north end of Coon Rapids Boulevard? Especially, I'm talking about heading west and crossing oncoming traffic into the neighborhood, because I don't live in the area, but I went multiple times during peak morning and pickup times at the end of the day, and I'm not a big fan of traffic at the beginning and end of school days. So my concern is if there's going to be development and increased volume, increased traffic, increased risk, I want to be assured that we have analysis or some looking into that, because it's going to impact the neighborhood. My question-
Okay.
-is, does the planning department plan to, or have they looked into the issue of traffic impact to this development?
Commissioner Knoblock, to my knowledge, we have not requested a study or additional analysis. I know when projects like this one come through the development review process, we have a multi-disciplinary team, including not just planners, but the city engineer, and so we do talk about the site plan. We do talk about those issues. I was looking through the engineering comments that our engineering department provided, and I don't see anything mentioned there, so I'm going to make the assumption that that issue was, we didn't conclude that that was necessary in this particular case, that the traffic impacts would be significant enough that we would need to do that.
Question number two.
Okay.
I'm not a, my question is, with the removal of 34 trees and only the addition of 17, and especially the location of all the trees that I saw that are targeted to be removed is going to change, there'll be room, of course, for building development, but there's going to be reduction of green in the neighborhood and also some impact to what kind of facilities they're going to have for playground and for athletic for the children. So I'm not a big fan of that, so. My question is, with the removal and the potential expansion of this school, is there a specific reason? Is there just not enough space, or is it just because of the building expansion?
Yeah. Commissioner Knoblock, that's a good question, and I'm hoping the applicant, when they get up here, can perhaps shed some light on the tree removal and the plan to replace trees. I'm going to, again, make another assumption that I think we recognize that not all of those trees, because in fact they're, you know, fairly large, mature trees, can be replaced on a one-for-one basis, so, you know, we, I think we recognize that, you know, half, if that could be replaced, that would be an acceptable number for them to replant.
And my third and final question. In the southeast quadrant of, up to the school, is that a flood plain or wetland that's adjacent right to the school? That kind of concerned me a little bit in regards to development.
Commissioner Knoblock, I don't believe there is a wetland on this.
Okay. Because there is zero development. It's, it looks like a marsh.
Yeah. I don't, I don't believe it is on their property.
Okay.
Again, maybe the applicant can shed some light on that.
Thank you.
Commission, any other questions for Mr. Fernelias?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Fernelias, was, I'm looking at the number of where these trees are being removed, and many of them are being removed for stormwater retention and/or infiltration basins. Was there any contemplation of the underground-type basins that we saw in previous projects, specifically like the Mercy Project, which would potentially reduce the need for these ponding areas a little bit and still allow us to maintain some of these trees as an alternative solution?
Commissioner Geisler, I don't, I don't know if there was a discussion of that. Again, this was a proposal that was presented to us. It's not something that we would require, so I think in this case, there is space to accommodate those ponds, and obviously that alternative method that you described is much more expensive. Yes. So I suspect this reflects kind of the reality of the site plan and probably some economic issues as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Fernelias, I had a question. Is this kind of underfunded by the school district? Is that, isn't this building, this facility affiliated with District 11?
That's correct.
So, okay, but the petitioner was the builder?
I believe it was either the builder or the architect, which is, that's the standard practice for that, a party like that to apply on behalf of the property owner.
Okay. And maybe this next question is more for the petitioner. What age span occupies that building? Is it K through 12? Is it-
That I don't know. That would be a good question for the applicant.
Just regarding the play areas, I think there's reference to three of them.
I believe so, yeah.
Two soft ones and a hard cord, or hard surface one, which probably would be, you know, a court of some kind, but.
Right, yes.
So, okay, I'll save that for the petitioner. Commissioner, or Commission, any other comments or questions for Mr. Fernelias? Is the petitioner in the audience? Just approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mike Craft from Mike Craft Architects, 1442 98th Lane Northwest. This actually is in my neighborhood.
No.
So we are thrilled to be making these modifications to this building. As you, as Grant hinted, it is almost a 100-year-old building. It was originally constructed in 1921, one of the oldest buildings in the city. It was added on again after about 20 years, and then there were three subsequent additions, which prob, which one might argue didn't hold to the character of the original building as well as the first two structures did. And our approach to this, we're kind of excited about. We know that we are moving this building closer to Ibis, and so we're, we've gone to great lengths to try and make this building now a face that they can look at rather than the 1950s vintage sort of green corrugated block piece that they have enjoyed for decades. We're excited about that. With me is Mandy Backstrom from Anderson Johnson Associates, who is the civil engineer, who can answer some of the specific questions with regard to the water retention and some of the other site-related topics, but I'll be able to address any specifics. And you did ask earlier, Madam Chair, about the ages of the schools and the students, and right now it is K through 12 that is in that building.
Okay, thank you. That, thus the three areas that might hit all those age groups. Commission, is there anything else you'd like to address to Mr. Craft?
For me?
Commissioner Geisler?
You're welcome. For coming tonight. Couple of questions around the parking spaces. Are you contemplating any renewable energy spaces, i.e. EV chargers or additional bikes' parking spaces for students or staff? Any sort of alternative transit options like that with this modification to your parking lot?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Geisler, we do have spaces for bicycle and other pieces like that, but we don't have electronic charging stations planned.
Okay. Thank you.
Can everyone speak up just a little? Sure. Everyone, speak up, please. At this time, if there are no further questions, pardon me, we need to open a public hearing on this matter, so we'll do that. In planning case 19-21, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this matter in front of the Planning Commission? Please approach the podium, sure, and state your name and your address, please.
I'm a former teacher, so maybe I don't even need you over there.
I think you should for the camera, for the camera. Thank you.
William Cavali, 10025 Grouse Street. On the information we received on the bottom cul-de-sac, right in the middle of the printout, I don't really know where to start. The print, the map is 30 to 35 years out of date. It does not show some of the streets that are there. It shows Grouse Street going through to Coon Rapids Boulevard. It hasn't done that, like I say, in about 35 years. You mentioned a wetland area. This whole, I don't know if I can, this whole area in here is wetland. It was at one time a very nice Minnesota bog, swamp, whatever, tamarack, birch, lots of birds and so forth, and for some reason, between the city and the school district, they came in and cut it all down. they came in and cut it all down, made a playground out of it, which was never used because it's underwater most of the time. Well, like I say, I have lots of questions, and I don't want to take up these people's time with, I think there's some, should be some things that are looked into more than just cursory sort of things. Thank you.
Commission, any thoughts or discussion pertaining to this, this matter, planning case nineteen twenty-one? Commissioner Bradley.
If I might address the civil engineer with a question?
Would you state your name and address, please?
Mandy Backstrom, seven five seven five Golden Valley Road, Golden Valley, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Ms. Backstrom, the gentleman just indicated that he thought that some of the drawings that we were furnished aren't up to date. Have you looked at the area and are these drawings representative of what's there now?
Yes. So I believe what he's referring to, the current survey has easement lines that would suggest the road goes all the way through. You guys do have a public water line and a public sanitary sewer that go through there that are in that easement corridor. So those are some of the lines that you're seeing on the survey and on the maps that we've submitted to you. The other part of that, he spoke to earlier, Grant spoke to earlier, about the lease agreement, cause part of that is technically city property, and there's a lease agreement with the school district to use that for parking spaces and such. So there's some messy line work on the survey, but that's part of all of the legal documents related to the easements and the current property lines.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Fernelius or Mr. Kraft, our civil engineer here tonight? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing?
Actually, if I can ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Smolke.
I think the question was raised a little bit earlier. I don't know if it was answered yet. So what is the anticipated growth of the student population then and the staff?
Mary, that's your microphone. You should bring it to you.
Hi, my name is Steve Anderson. I'm Director of Buildings at Grau School District. One of the things that, that is a little bit unknown with this building is that this is a special, special needs building. The classrooms are smaller, the students are fewer per staff, and the staffing is based on the number of students that are brought into the school. So it's hard to say what it, it'll, it's strictly based on the needs of the students in the district. We're not anticipating any, any huge growth in this particular area, but again, it depends. The needs of the students will fluctuate from year to year. So it's not, we're not projecting any hard, large growth numbers.
Chair Casey, I have a question. Is it Mr. Henderson?
Anderson.
Anderson. And for the record, could you provide your address and your?
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-seven twenty-seven North Ferry Street.
Okay, and you're a representative of?
The school district.
The school district, okay. Is there any other representatives here tonight from the school district?
No.
From administration, from legal, anyone?
I am the, I am a part of administration.
Okay, thank you. My question pertaining to you is, are you familiar with the Northdale Middle School development and the traffic flow that the planning commission approved about within the last year? Are you familiar with the project?
I'm familiar with, with the Northdale project.
Okay.
And are you talking about the roadwork and then the vehicle storage buildings?
Very good design, very good plan, but in practice, even with that room, I'm not impressed with it because I have someone in my family who goes to that school, so I'm very familiar with the traffic flow and how it works in the morning and in, at the end of business day or school day. So my, my question is, what kind of mitigation or plans are there? This is a smaller area than the Northdale example, and I expect there to be even further traffic impact with these, with additional parking, reduced, the, the changing of the traffic flow patterns. I'm very interested, are there any additional plans to, to make this work? Cause it's a very small, tight location, and the roads are not north and south. There are a lot of winding roads, it's in a very tight commu, neighborhood community. That's my concern, and I, I, I hope there's some effort, if not today, in whatever timeframe follows this meeting, that that is addressed, because I think that will have a big impact in the community and the neighborhood here.
I, I'm actually let the architect this, comment on the?
Thank you.
Traffic flow. They've got the design, but we have got some plans for buses on the backside of the building as well as on the front to try and mitigate some of the traffic flow in and out.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Knoblock, I think your, your point is, is an excellent one, and one of the things that, although there is not a large growth of students coming to this school as a, as a result of what we're doing, one of the things that we have attempted to do as part of this development, when we sat down with the school and said, what do you need to make this work, is exactly what you're talking about. Being able to take traffic, move buses to one part of the site, as Steve pointed out, so that now we will be able to circulate the building and allow buses and emergency vehicles to go onto the west side of the building as well, and by providing more length to the parking area, it allows us to better separate the vehicle traffic from the pedestrian traffic from the bus traffic. So I think what you're saying, at least within our block that we can control, will be more simple, so that as people are coming and going off of the site, that traffic will be more simple as well. Now, what happens at Coon Rapids Boulevard and along the other streets that come to it is not addressed by this project, simply because, as Mr. Fernelius mentioned, the increase in traffic due to this is, is very, very insignificant compared to the volumes that are there today.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Kraft, I have a question too. When you said there would be access for the buses on the west side of the property, is that not IBIS Street?
So.
In fencing?
Yeah, one of the things that we've tried to do, and if you still have this graphic up, you can see right directly along the west side of the building, right up against the building, is that paved area, which allows vehicle traffic, allows emergency vehicle traffic, and also allows during the day when the gates are closed for student play area. So it's not at IBIS, it's right up against the building, so it's on the property.
On the property, within the fencing then?
Exactly.
I see. And it's heavy duty by two minutes pavement for buses?
Yeah, it's designed for, for what's needed, yes.
For vehicles, okay. Thank you. Any other comments, Commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Thank you. If I may, to the question or the, the comment regarding closing off that access road for the non-traffic or non-school days, you'd mentioned a fence that would be placed there? Did I hear that correctly? Across the, the western access road?
During the, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Geisler, during the school day, while students may be out using those playgrounds, there would be gates that would close for the protection of the students. Is that, is that the comment you were?
But then what about, so during weekend, off-hours, nights and evenings, those will be open? Is that, would that be correct?
I don't know the answer to that. No, they would, they would remain closed.
Okay, so the, the objective of those?
Oh, we wouldn't want cars whipping through there.
Right, that's, that's where I was getting. So that, that, that access road will effectively be closed, not during the school hours as well as during, when children are present. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion, Commission? Before we, any other, any one wishing to speak here at the public hearing? We haven't actually closed it, so. Anyone else? And then we will close the public hearing in this matter in planning case nineteen twenty-one. And I guess now's our chance to broach some discussion if need be. Commissioner Smolke?
I'll go ahead. In the planning case nineteen dash twenty-one, I recommend that the commission approve the approval of the site plan with the following conditions. They're compliant with Title XI, all engineering comments be addressed, the applicant enter into a revised lease agreement if necessary with the city, and on the west side of the building, tree replacement be done at a ratio of one new tree per two trees removed, that would total seventeen new overstoryed trees. And it does an additional here, the commission would also approve the conditional use permit for an elementary school based on the following finding, that the proposed conditional use permit is compliant with the conditional use permit standards found in Chapter eleven dash three zero four dot three.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Smolke, seconded by Commissioner Geisler, is, is on the table. Is there any discussion? Then we'll vote.
Chair, Chair Casey, I just want to make one last statement. I'll be voting against this because I, I don't believe it addresses a, a lot of the concerns I have for the community and for this development, and I just want to clarify that, cause I'm very pro-business, very pro-education, but I, I don't, I don't agree with this format of this proposal today, so I'll be voting against it, so, this motion.
Thank you. The motion is on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. And the motion has passed, and with that, this goes to the, it's a decision by the planning commission, appeal to the city council is available within ten days in written format.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we are moving on to planning case nineteen dash twenty-three, registered land survey at one one two two five Zeon Street, JSN Properties.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. So you have before you this evening a registered land survey to subdivide two parcels, par, excuse me, two parcels totaling eleven point six acres into three lots. Again, I'll just kind of go through real briefly the actions this evening, so after my presentation, there'll be an opportunity to ask questions. The applicant, I don't know if the applicant is here this?
Might I interrupt just a moment?
Sure.
Mr. Kraft, could you remove that conversation to the hallway? Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate that. So after my presentation, there'll be an opportunity to ask questions. If the applicant is here, and I don't believe they are, they could, they could provide additional comment. We do need to conduct a public hearing tonight. The decision tonight is actually a recommendation, so the council will be the final, have the final approval authority on this particular item, and that would be anticipated on December third. I do want to highlight a couple of things related to the sixty-day rule, because we caught a couple of things that, a couple of errors in the staff report. So this application was actually received on October twenty-third, not October fourteenth. And under our sixty-day statute, the city would need to act by December twenty-second, so I just want to point that out to correctly reflect the record. Terms of the, a location, the property is at one one two two five Exion or Zeon Street. It's, I know it's, it's pronounced both ways, I've, I've heard in my tenure here in Coon Rapids. The existing use is both Exion Street and a warehouse. Under our comprehensive plan, it's considered right-of-way and industrial, and it is zoned industrial property. So this one, I want to provide a little bit of context. As I was going through the staff report, it was a little bit confusing to try and understand exactly what was going on, so I'll, I'll try and sort through the details. This is an aerial drawing of the site that is subject to this registered land survey. To provide a little of the bigger context, I'm gonna provide you or, or transition to this slide, which is the existing registered land survey one, one seventy-nine, which is referenced in the staff report. And I'll talk a little bit about the components of it and, and how it relates to the request that is before you this evening. So as you recall, back on April nineteenth, JSN Properties, which was the developer of the new industrial building that is now constructed to the south of the warehouse, which is now owned by Steinwall Properties. So back in, in April of twenty nineteen, JSN Properties was granted site plan approval. It's amazing to think that they were granted site plan approval, and the building is now completed, but they moved very quick. And that was to construct an eighty-five thousand square foot office warehouse building and associated parking on this lot, that again is south of the, of the ILS that we're talking about this evening. Included in that development was a driveway along Exion Street, roughly in this location here. And in order to provide that access, and so there's a number of different tracts of land that are referenced here, so this is the part that I think is a little bit confusing, there had to be some adjustments to the lot line. And so that was, that was part of the action that was taken. In addition, you might recall, another issue that came up in addition to the driveway, and that's this area that I've highlighted in red, was a existing drainage and utility easement that was not, it was not functional for the JSN development. So that, through some negotiations that the developer had, was going to be shifted to the south end of the Steinwall property, and that's this area that I've highlighted for, this area on the registered land survey. Those were conditions of approval, and it's essentially the south hundred and fifty-four feet of the, of the Steinwall property. So that was the action that was taken to approve the project. After that happened, as you recall, back in September, in order to actually make that happen, the applicant discovered that a lot line adjustment, and it's, we, technically we call it a subdivision exception, but it's essentially a lot line adjustment is, is what was required. They went through that process to kind of formalize this arrangement, and the, basically the bottom line, when they went to try and record the documents, is they learned from the county that because of this complicated arrangement, especially with regard to legal descriptions, that it couldn't be recorded. So they had to go back through the, not through the approval process, but they had to, they couldn't do it through a subdivision exception or a lot line adjustment. So they essentially had to create a new registered land survey for this property. So that's the next slide. So essentially what, what is happening is that this area that's highlighted in blue, again, that's the, that's the subject of this action tonight, is this area that I've highlighted on this next slide. So what the applicant is proposing to do is to take that previous or the current registered land survey and essentially divide it into two lots. So what will happen is the south hundred and fifty-four feet will be essentially created as a new tract C. That will eventually be deeded to JSN, that's the developer to the south of the property. The remainder of what they're calling Track Day, this is where it gets a little bit confusing, that's the, that's the current registered land survey, will be a, a part of the property that Steinwall Properties currently owns. That's ref- will be part of the property that Steinwall Properties currently owns. That's referenced as Tract B, this, in the new registered land survey. So, we're kind of interchangeably using tract references, but they actually apply to two different, two different registered land surveys. So I think that's part of the confusion. So, this element is, is one part of it. The second component really deals with this area on the south end of, yeah, south end of the, of the ILS, which is a tract that lies roughly along the boundary of Exion Street. This is Tract D, but in, in this new registered land survey, it's actually referenced as Tract A. That's Exion Street. That is right-of-way, actually, technically, it's considered Tract A here. So it's not really dedicated as, as right-of-way, but it's, it's the land where Exion Street is located. That will continue to be owned by the city. The remainder, which is this area down on the south end, so it was really this area and highlighted in red, in order to allow access, driveway access for the JSN development, that will now be incorporated, as you can see, into Tract C. So, all of this action, by creating a new registered land survey, clears up these issues that we, that we dealt with or tried to deal with as part of that lot line adjustment. Now it'll be much cleaner. So, again, we will need to conduct a public hearing tonight. But our recommendation in this case is to approve this registered land survey. And this will, if it's, if the recommendation is to approve it tonight, it would go to the council on December 3rd. So I hope I didn't confuse you more. Hopefully, I cleared up some of the background on this particular request.
Thank you, Mr. Frenelius. Commission, is there any comments or discussion before I open a public hearing? Commissioner Geisler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple clarification questions. As far as recommendation one, a drainage and utility easement be granted in favor of the city across all of Tract C. Is that meant to, meant to indicate the entirety of Tract C will be considered a drainage and utility easement?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not just left, east-west across it, but the entirety of the tract?
It's the entirety of that Tract C, correct.
And then, second to that, does the city have the proper easements that it needs in what is to become the new Tract B, Tract A boundary zone? Or should, or do we need an additional easement along the street there, or does that already exist?
I believe that exists. Everything that the city needs would, would be accommodated by this ILS.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. In that case, in Planning Case 19-23, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this matter? Planning Case 1923, Registered Land Survey on Exion Street. No one wishing to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Commission, is there anything you need to address?
Chair Casey, if there are no comments from fellow commissioners, I make the motion and recommendation, in Planning Case 19-23, the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed registered land survey with the following conditions: one, a drainage and utility easement be granted in favor of the city across all of proposed Tract C; two, Tract C be deeded to the applicant, JSN Properties; item three, Tract A be deeded to the city, and Tract B be deeded to Steinwall Properties.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any discussion at this point? Okay, and regarding this Planning Case 19-23, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and the, that will move to the City Council at their next meeting on December 3rd for final approval. Thank you, Mr. Frenelius.
Thank you.
And are you going to stay up there and entertain us some more?
I may as well just stay up here.
Okay, all right.
If that's okay.
And we are moving on to Planning Case 19-22, which is a preliminary plat on 8840 to 8880 Evergreen Boulevard in Coon Rapids. CSF is the petitioner.
Madam Chair, Commissioners? This is a request for a preliminary plat to subdivide twenty-two point nine acres, located at 8840 to 8880 Evergreen Boulevard, into two industrial lots. This proposed plat will create a lot for the existing building, which is there, I believe that is the Alina, currently, the Alina Call Center, and a smaller lot for future development. And we don't, at this point in time, we don't have any specific development plans for that site, which we'll review in just a moment. Again, in terms of actions, I'll give a short presentation. We'll conduct a public hearing, much like the previous item. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and on December 3rd, the City Council would then consider approval of this item. This is another item where we noticed an error in the sixty-day action. So just, again, for the record, I want to state that this application was received on October 23rd, not October 14th. And thus, we need to take action under 1599 by December 22nd, 2019. So with that formality out of the way, I'll provide you with an aerial photograph of the site. This is, I believe, Evergreen Boulevard, that kind of runs along the, the east side of the property. The use is currently industrial. It's also designated that under our comprehensive plan, and the site is zoned industrial as well. The existing lot, so that's this entire parcel that you, that you see here under the preliminary plat, is twenty-two point nine acres in size, and there is an existing building, two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand square feet in size. The building was constructed back in 1985 with several additions in the nineteen nineties to bring it to its current configuration. This site has a total of one-thousand-twenty-two parking stalls. And what the applicant is proposing to do is to plat two lots. So the bulk of the site would be one lot, roughly nineteen point six acres in size, and include the building, the existing building, and most of the parking that you see on the site today. Lot two, which would then be this future development parcel, is three point two acres in size. Currently, there's a small wooded area along with a wetland. The lots would meet our dimensional requirements under, under our code. Obviously, we wouldn't be doing that if, if they didn't. So they meet those requirements. Lot one complies with lot coverage requirements, so that's kind of the floor, floor area ratio. The lot coverage for lot two, obviously, we don't know because we don't have a, a building or development plan at this particular point in time. Parking requirements for the existing building is six-hundred-and-thirty-seven spaces is what would be required for that building. Parking requirement for the new building will obviously be determined at the time of, of development. We do believe at this point in time, based on the concept plan, which we have for the site, and I'll show you that in the next drawing, that, that parking would be adequate to address that. But obviously, a decision is not to be made on that this evening. Park dedication is another thing I wanted to mention. So park dedication on the existing property was collected when this was, plat was recorded and the, and the project was developed back in nineteen eighty-five. No park dedication is required as part of this plat. So I believe we've collected all the pla, park dedication fees that would, would normally accrue for, for this particular development. So those are my formal remarks. Again, our recommendation this evening is that the Planning Commission approve this preliminary plat with the engineering, or with the comments that we've, or conditions that we've noted in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commission, do you have questions? Commissioner Geisler for Mr. Frenelius?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Mr. Frenelius, a question about the improved surface percentage of this lot. Currently, the lot two makes up fifteen percent of this, of the current plat, which is obviously an unimproved surface currently and all wooded. It would appear that the excision of this lot will make this site ninety-plus percent in improved surface. Is there enough land left here to do proper water mitigation on-site as per city code?
That is an issue that we would have to address whenever that future development takes place. I mean, stormwater will be an issue that, that will have to be evaluated as, as part of a future development proposal.
Would that, with respect, is that to future development of Lot Two?
Future development of Lot Two, correct.
But with this removal, will that make, does Lot One still retain the appropriate level of stormwater mitigation since their improved surfaces will go up significantly as a percentage of their lot?
Yeah, we, well, this isn't a development proposal tonight, so we're not really addressing stormwater as it relates to a plat. This is essentially a, a legal right that the, the landowner has to subdivide the property. What they need to do in order to comply with stormwater requirements is something that we would deal with as part of a site plan application. So, I think as a practical matter, yes, they're going to need to address stormwater if and when they, they do develop that Lot Two.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Frenelius, in that case, that could affect their parking areas, is that what we're saying? Something would have to be done to the parking area of Lot One if Lot Two is developed? If there's a site plan that comes to light.
That's correct, yeah. I mean, stormwater would have to be addressed as, as part of any, any future development. I, you know, we don't have grading or drainage plans at this particular point in time, so we weren't, we're not evaluating that as part of this application, but that's something that we would have to do at a, a future, future date.
And did I understand you to say that this is the Alina Call Center? Is that the entirety of the big building on Lot One?
There are, as I understand it, there are two tenants in that building. I believe Honeywell occupies a small part, part of that building, but Alina occupies most of it.
That's what I was seeing. I did drive down there, and that was kind of my, I wanted to clarify that with you, though. Commission, is there any other questions for Mr. Frenelius in this matter? Then we will consider Planning Case 19-22, the preliminary plat.
Chair Casey?
Commissioner Knoblock?
I make the motion. In Planning Case 19-2, the commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions: one, all engineering comments be addressed; two, across access parking agreement be provided prior to construction on Lot Two.
Madam Chair?
I need to open a public hearing, I apologize. So in that case, be prepared to repeat yourself, Commissioner Knoblock. I will open a planning, or, public hearing, in this case 19-22. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this matter regarding the preliminary plat? No one wishing to speak? I will close the public hearing. Would you mind getting it again, Mr. Knoblock?
Chair Casey, in, as I repeat, in Planning Case 19-22, the commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions: one, all engineering comments be addressed; two, across access parking agreement be provided prior to construction on Lot Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second in Planning Case 19-22. Any more further discussion, Commission? Yes, Commissioner Geisler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would like to express my concern here of basically excising a wetland from an industrial property. I would have concerns about the future development of Lot Two. It looks like a piece of land that may be very difficult to develop. It's heavily wooded, it's a wetland. I think it's providing active drainage for this site. I, I do think that, while it is a right to subdivide, it seems like it could be a challenge going forward for future development of this property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Casey, I have a question for Mr. Frenelius.
Frenelius.
Frenelius. I always just destroy it.
It's okay.
My question for you is, is that a lot, a wooded lot, or a wooded wetland lot? Because I've been by it, it's wooded.
Commissioner Knoblock, that's a good question. I'm looking at some of the attachments for the preliminary plat. And I don't, I mean, I've, we've got the aerial photo up. And so, I mean, clearly, it's wooded. I'm not seeing a reference anywhere to a wetland.
Within the discussion there, there is a description that says, there is a wetland on Lot Two. The impact of development will be determined at the time Lot Two is developed. That's in the staff comments within the planning case itself. That was my sole reference for that.
Okay, all right. Well, so I stand corrected.
Lot Two, where it says Lot Two is three point two five acres.
Right.
I vote, Chair Casey for Mr. Frenelius. All right. On the engineering map, is that an actual wetland, or are those drainage fields or drainage tiles? Like, is the entire parcel a wetland, or are those just the drainage tanks or the, like, the runoff for that lot?
Right. Again, Commissioner Knoblock, so the staff report does note that there, that there is a wetland. I don't know how much of it has been delineated. You know, I don't see any stormwater ponding, but obviously, it provides some benefit for, for drainage. So again, that's going to have to be delineated and addressed when, when they develop the site.
And I have a follow-up question for Mr. Frenelius.
There you go.
No, I forgot.
It might come to you.
No, it's gone. All right. If it's important, it will return.
Okay, so this might, this whole thing might, in regards to Lot Two, might be revisited at a time of development.
That's correct.
As it stands at, as it does now. So, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Anything more to be said? Then we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the, the recommendation in this case has passed in Planning Case 19-22. It's a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and the decision will be by the City Council on their next meeting, December 3rd. And we, we will move on to Planning Case 19-20.
Yes, that's correct.
With the conditional use permit for a place of worship at 1820 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Jerome Hamilton Jr. Mr. Frenelius, do you have background for us?
I, I do, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. So as you mentioned, this is a conditional use permit to operate a place of worship at 1820 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The property is zoned office. A place of worship is allowed in the office district with a conditional use permit. So that's why, that's why this request is before you this evening. Again, this action, because it involves a conditional use permit, will include a public hearing, a decision by the, by the Planning Commission. There is an appeal to the City Council either by the applicant or, or the public. But again, that needs to happen within ten days of, of tonight's action, and it has to be in, in writing. Again, another just standard comment that I'm going to make about the sixty-day rule, this application Uh, this application was actually received on October sixteenth. I think you see the pattern here, there was a little cutting and pasting going on, and some of the same dates were used for the staff report, so apologize for not catching that, uh, but we want to state for the record what the, what the correct date is. So, the application was received on October sixteenth, uh, and in, in order to comply with, um, Minnesota Statute fifteen ninety-nine, the sixty-day rule, we need to act, uh, by December fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Terms of the site itself, as we mentioned, or I mentioned earlier, uh, this is currently a, um, it's an office building. In terms of its use, it's technically considered a vacant space. Uh, under our comprehensive plan, um, it is designated commercial mixed use, uh, and as I mentioned earlier, the, um, the, the site is zoned office. Uh, the applicant is proposing to occupy nine hundred and eighty square feet. Uh, this aerial photo shows you the, the location, uh, where this, um, church will be, um, will exist. Um, the space is one half, uh, as I mentioned earlier, of, of the building. I have a pictometry photo that kind of shows you how the two, the two buildings relate to one another. Um, the other half is occupied by a hair salon. Um, this building or site plan was approved in nineteen eighty. It originally, uh, included twelve thousand square feet of office, uh, building, so it was a much larger, um, site plan, and I think when you look at, um, some other exhibits that I have, it kind of makes sense in terms of what the grand scheme was back in the day, but that never materialized. Currently, there are, um, two existing tenants, so eighteen eighteen Coon Rapids Boulevard is the hair salon, uh, eighteen twenty Coon Rapids Boulevard, uh, is the vacant space that would be occupied by the, by the church. As noted in the staff report, so essentially, this is, uh, I think roughly a two thousand square foot building, if I, if I do the math correctly, so roughly ten thousand square feet of that original twelve thousand square foot plan was not constructed. Uh, in nineteen ninety-four, the property was subdivided. Um, the subdivision split the developed portion of the project from the undeveloped portion of the property. Uh, and the undeveloped lot, which, let's see if I can, uh, find that, so that's essentially this area here, was, um, acquired by Anoka County, and I did a search this afternoon, and it's actually in the name of Anoka County Highway Department. I don't know why that is, um, I don't have the history of, of why Anoka County acquired it, uh, but this is part of a, a, a CIC plat or Common Interest Community, essentially kind of a condominium plat, if you will. Um, I imagine because each of these buildings was, was contemplated to have separate ownership. So, the particular proposal that is, uh, um, part of this request for a conditional use permit relates to, uh, a church or a house of worship. A little bit about, um, how that facility will operate, so the congregation will meet on weeknights, uh, Wednesday or Thursday, and Sunday mornings between eleven AM and two PM. Uh, congregation currently has thirty members, and Sunday services typically draw between twenty and thirty-two members in weeknights around fifteen. So, the space itself, uh, can accommodate, uh, I believe up to a hundred and eighteen people based on square footage. There will need to be some internal modifications to make sure, um, that the usable, that the u- the space can be used as the applicant intends, and obviously will have to meet building codes and apply for a permit at the appropriate time. Um, I don't believe there are any other, uh, changes proposed to the exterior of the building. Um, and there is an existing freestanding sign, which you can see here. Um, I don't believe that's, um, so there, there is signage that, that they could use, or spaced, uh, on that particular sign, uh, at the appropriate time. And again, uh, access to the site is provided off of Coon Rapids Boulevard Service Road, and there are no changes, uh, to the access. One of the issues that we did, um, examine is parking, and I suspect you may have some questions about that, so we'll try and work our way through that process. I believe the applicant is here also, and, and they can maybe shed some light on the parking discussions. So, based on the square footage of, again, just the church, um, well, actually, the church and the hair salon, um, both of the, the church would require thirty parking spaces, uh, and the salon requires three parking spaces. Again, that's based on the square footage and the use. The parking lot would, would have to be repaired as needed and striped to delineate. As you can see from, uh, this aerial photo, that's, that's not, uh, the current condition of the lot, so that would need to be addressed, so people know where to park. Um, there is a proposed parking layout, uh, that they submitted, and that is included in your packet, uh, which provides eighteen spaces, um, which could accommodate seventy-two people. I don't know how this was calculated, um, I can't find any notes in our file, how, what's that, what that is based on. Obviously, if you do the math, that there's an assumption about four people, presumably per vehicle, but I don't know, um, kind of what the, the rationale is behind that. However, um, staff did conclude, uh, that this is sufficient, I think in part because this is a relatively small congregation, um, that the parking is sufficient. Should the congregation grow and require additional space, um, there is some available space. I believe it is this area on this, this, kind of this, I guess that would be the south end of the site. Obviously, we would, we would need to see a plan, uh, and the parking that's currently shown, as well as on this, uh, particular diagram, would probably have to be reconfigured, um, in order to, to determine exactly how much additional parking could be constructed. Um, most of the parking demand, obviously for a church, or in this case, would be on a Sunday when the salon is closed, so we feel that there would be, um, there isn't gonna be, kind of, that those uses aren't necessarily gonna be competing for parking, um, and both tenants can use the parking lot without, uh, impacting the other. The other issue I wanted to, um, point out is there is an existing dumpster, um, and I don't know where that is, uh-
It's on the very east side.
Is it on the east side of the lot?
Yeah, kind of would be hidden by those trees.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, city code does require, uh, that a dumpster, uh, be used in conjunction with a commercial or institution, or, so a dumpster has to be screened, basically, is what our, what our, uh, code requires, with some kind of a masonry, um, structure. We felt in our, um, analysis of this application, and because it is a conditional use permit, this is an opportunity to address that. Um, so, as part of the, um, conditions of approval, uh, we are recommending that, that enclosure be constructed to, to screen that dumpster, as well as any recycling, um, containers. So, I know there was some discussion, I, I believe, Mr. Heiliger had with the applicant about that, but that is something that we want to make sure is a, uh, a condition of the, of the, uh, conditional use permit, of the approval. Um, I won't go through all of the, um, conditional use standards, but we have a number of them under Chapter eleven, three oh four. We did do our, uh, analysis, um, including the parking, and we did conclude, based on the plan and based on, um, information presented by the, uh, applicant, that those standards, we believe, can be met. So, we are recommending approval of, uh, of the conditional use permit for Planning Case nineteen twenty with three conditions that we have listed in the staff report.
And is the applicant in the audience?
I believe so.
Would you like to address us?
Yes.
Okay, please approach the podium then and state your name and your address.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Um, I'm Pastor Jerome Hamilton, and I live at, uh, one zero one seven zero Powers Lake Point in Woodbury, Woodbury, Minnesota. Um, I thought it might be helpful, uh, to give you a little bit of backdrop on our church. Um, we started in my home with eight to ten, uh, congregants. Um, we outgrew that, and we reached a number, uh, north of twenty. We moved to a hotel in White Bear Lake, uh, we're at the Best Western right off sixty-one. We've been having service there for a full year. And now, when everyone shows up, uh, we can be thirty or north of thirty. On average, we're holding somewhere around twenty-one or twenty-two people a Sunday. Last Sunday, we had three visiting families, so obviously we're, we're quite over that number. Um, and so now, we're at the point where we want to actually have our own place of worship and get away from just paying rent to the hotel. Um, we're not a very large congregation, um, we're a small congregation, we're a small family church, so even if we, this site will allow us the opportunity at all, at, at even a hundred and nineteen people to, to triple in size, and I've been asked, uh, what happens when that happens, it'd be a good problem to have, actually, and I would worry about that then. And so, we had a professional architect, uh, go in and lay out the inside of the building to help us determine capacity, as well as the same architect did the parking lot work. He came up with the number of spaces in the parking lot. And so, uh, that's why I'm here tonight, and, um, I'll just answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Commission, are there questions for the applicant, Pastor Hamilton? Um, Commissioner Schmalki?
Actually, I do have a couple of questions. So, first of all, I'm wondering, um, is there parking allowed along the service road?
Uh, Commissioner Schmalki, that's a good question. Uh, I don't know.
Okay, uh, could we get an answer to that?
Yes.
That, that actually, um, I think is important to understand. Part of my, um, the direction I'm going, so I, I see that a lot of this, um, plan is to really improve the existing parking lot, probably to add a little bit more organization so that people know where to park, um, and to use the space most effectively, right, to accommodate the number of people. So, if at some point you do, um, outgrow the parking lot, um, the question about the service road is really important, so I want to make sure we don't, um, spill out onto that, um, to that road. And, uh, the other question I had is about the ownership of the lot, then it's not clear to me, who actually is responsible or owns the, the parking lot, then? So, if an expansion is needed, like, who, who's, who would do that?
Um, Commissioner Schmalki, that's a good question. I tried to identify that as well today, and so-
Okay.
When I went to, uh, Anoka County G I S, it referred me to a, a number to call. I didn't get a chance to, um, contact the county, it was after hours.
Sure.
Um, so, it is, like I said earlier, there is, and maybe the applicant can shed some light on, cause I believe they're buying the, the building, so they may understand how that relationship works in terms of the parking lot and what their rights are to use it.
Uh, I mean, know very little. I've been told that four of the spots there have to be retained for the salon that's next door, and the remainder would come to us. Um, we, when I do math, and, uh, on the current parking situation, based on what's given, given to me in terms of, of four in a car, even at that capacity, if we had eighteen slots there, that's, uh, what's the math on that? Seventy-two, seventy-two, um, that will still allow for a significant growth opportunity for us, and we would not be, uh, we wouldn't be opposed to actually even entertain and buying that other parcel of land that you shared with us tonight if we, if we came to that problem, or if we grew three times that quickly. Um, we would entertain what, what it would take to possibly, uh, acquire that, because by then, we'd have more offering money coming in, because we'd be a larger congregation. It's purely math, and so.
So, my only, my only concern, though, is that the, that parcel or that piece where you would want to or need to expand, um, you don't have control of that today, so today's decision, though, is really based on kind of what, uh, means are available to you now, right?
Correct.
So, I'm, I'm still, um, I am a little bit concerned, um, just in terms of, because I don't know, is there any sort of a, a shared lot agreement with the parking lot between you and the salon, or the owner of the property? Like, whose responsibility is it, then, for making sure that the lot is kept clean during this, the winter months, um, things like that?
So, as my-
Is there a property owner that takes care of that? Are you paying a service for that, or?
Yeah, I would, as a church, since I would be, um, using the largest portion of the lot, I would hire, uh, someone to clean the snow and take care of the lot. Also, we're gonna be responsible, if this permit gets approved, to stripe the lot, and we understand we need to do what's necessary to, uh, improve the parking lot.
And is there-
As well as take care of it.
Okay, is there a written agreement to that effect?
There's no written agreement, because we just assumed it was our responsibility, but I'm assuming that if we needed to do that, we could make that happen.
Is, is that a recommendation, or is that a, is that a requirement under, under a circumstance like this?
Commissioner Schmalki, in this instance, I think what, what, the way that we have, the way that we have drafted the recommendation is that if it's required, they're going to have to build it, they're gonna have to provide a, a plan. We haven't seen that plan to know exactly how much additional parking would be required. I mean, the only thing that they would be able to do would be, um, to build additional parking on either the property that they own, and again, I don't know that they own the lot, but, um, again, I'm making an assumption that they have some kind of right as a property owner, because this is part of a CIC plat, to use the parking that is adjacent to their site. The other property, that larger lot, is owned by Anoka County.
Right.
And so, I don't, you know, we could not s- make that a condition of approval, because they, Anoka County might not sell it to them. So, and, um, we did check, related to your question about parking on Coon Rapids Boulevard ex, um, the service road, and, yeah, if you wanna-
Um, I was able to, I texted three of our Coon Rapids officers and asked them, all three indicated that you can park there, you cannot park there overnight, but you can park there during daytime hours.
Okay, great. Very timely text.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Figured that was the best way to get the information quickly.
Yeah.
Chair.
Thank you. Is there any more questions? Commissioner Bradley?
Thank you, Chair. Um, sir, do you know if there's an occupancy limit on the, uh, part of the building that you will occupy?
My understanding is, as we've had it laid out, uh, based on Architectural Code, at, uh, one seventh of, it's, it's like eight hundred and something square feet, so it came out at a hundred and nineteen max inside of the, uh, building that we can hold in the open space.
And that's through the architect, not, usually, I think the, uh, occupancy limits are set by the, um, fire inspectors, I believe.
Commissioner Bradley, I mean, you raise a good point. Um, there are occupancy standards in the building code, um, either our building official and/or, um, fire marshal, you know, address that as part of a, um, a plan review. So, you know, the hundred and nineteen, I suspect, is based on this type of use and this, um, an assembly, a place of assembly, so I suspect that's where the hundred and nineteen occupancy number came from.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Haikola?
Thank you. I'm wondering if the improvements to the parking lot, to the striping and the, uh, covering of the dumpster is required prior to them obtaining or starting their services at the church?
There are conditions, that one of them addresses the, um, the trash enclosure.
What I'm talking about prior to them starting to have services there, or when does this need to be, when does this need to be completed?
Well, this is going to, this is a decision by the Planning Commission, so when we approve it, then those conditions must be met.
That would be part of the condition of approval, correct?
Correct.
Might I?
Yes.
The only, the only thing I would ask the Commission to, uh, I mean, the rules are what they are, to consider is that the striping of the parking lot, um, which we are willing to do, I think there's some seasonal concerns around when it can be done, so I would, I wouldn't want to have to wait all the way to next May or June or whatever to get into the building and start having service out. It would be nice if we could be tagged with having to get it done as soon as we're able to get it done.
Can we add that, Mr. Fornelius, as a, as an addition, or?
Yeah, um- Chair Casey, you can, you can certainly do that, I think, um, staff would, uh, you know, understand what the practical limitations are if this were approved-
Yeah.
And they were to occupy the building before it could be striped, but, uh, if you want to add that language to clarify, that's fine.
And my suggestion would be that you would pick a date and put that date in there, um, something clearly into the spring where it would be able to be able to be done, and if for some reason we had a really long winter, then they could work with staff to extend that time, but at least there would be an identifiable date.
Okay, yeah. So, we would maybe add a fourth condition? Commissioner Geisler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would, uh-
I would, just for the sake of conversation, I would consider a date of June first. No later than all conditions be completed by June first, including the trash enclosure. Personal experience is concrete in the winter isn't great either. So allowing them time to make appropriate adjustments. I do have a question for staff, though, regarding the second recommendation, or second condition here. If the congregation were to exceed seventy-two, we're requesting that the parking be adjusted. However, there is no indication of how long they would have to make those accommodations. Does staff have a requested timeframe? Or is staff comfortable leaving that wide open for them to accommodate that within a certain period of time?
Apologize. Ms. Westervelt was providing a comment about that. So, and what she said is that we could, you know, if it became, so I think the way it's written right now, we're, we feel is adequate. If it became an issue, we do have the power to revoke a conditional use permit. There is a process that you could go through. So I think the way that it's written, we're comfortable with that, so.
Excellent.
Including the timeframe for the garbage enclosure as well as the striping?
Yes, I think all of the conditions that are listed here, if there was a concern about timeliness or non-compliance, that would be a basis to review the conditional use permit.
Okay, so you're saying that we don't need a fourth condition with a date of, say, June first?
No, I think you do.
I think, yeah, I think you would, we can add that, that provides clarity to that item.
Okay. Quick come up with the wording, Commissioner Geisler.
So long as no one has additional discussions, I would like to make a motion-
We need to hold the public here.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
And we'll do that in Planning Case nineteen dash twenty. I'm going to open a public hearing in this matter for the conditional use permit for a place of worship. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to this? Hi, would you step to the podium, state your name and your address?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners and Chair Casey. My name is Philip Brummer. I'm representing Jerome Hamilton and his church in the purchase of this. I'm his realtor with Coldwell Banker Burnett. My address is one one four five five Viking Drive out of Eden Prairie. In our search to find this particular building, we have addressed the, what we're interested in doing on the main floor. One thing that hasn't been addressed is the whole lower floor is already finished and usable. However, we're not making any changes to that. So the capacity outlined by Michael Mann of Michael Mann Architects was for the capacity of the upper level with the walls removed. Right now, it's operating as a chiropractic office, and it's got several small rooms that do not support the ceiling, because it is a spancrete-type building. So all of those walls are freestanding. With all of those walls removed and the square footage increased, that's where that occupancy number came up with. So that was one thing I wanted to address and let you know that there's more square footage available to the congregation than just that main level. The second one is about the, how we're going to handle the trash or the refuse that comes out of this particular building as far as that garbage enclosure. Now, my discussions with Scott Harlecker over the phone indicated that we had one of two options. One, we could leave that dumpster there if needed. In that case, it did need that cement-type enclosure. And that is in the event that we had enough garbage to qualify for something like that. Congregation of his size, other than paper cups and napkins, I don't see it would maybe require that much space at this time. I'm not saying that as the congregation grows that we would need to address that. We certainly would. I'm just saying, maybe at this time, we could simply remove that, allowing that to be presented in that fashion at the time, so.
So you may not need a, you might just need the trash barrels?
Just a trash barrel, and then either, you know, the members of his congregation that are responsible for the cleaning simply take it out with them, because it would be very, very limited.
Sure. Is there any kind of an agreement with the salon? Do they make use of that dumpster on the property?
To that, I don't know. I haven't talked to that salon owner, other than through the other agent that is representing the seller, in this case, the building owner right now. They have talked to that salon owner a few different times, in which case, she's very, very marginally open. She does it more of a hobby rather than a full-time business. Her hours are significantly less than a full-time employee there.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing in this matter? With that, I will close the public hearing. And Commission, do you have other concerns or things that need to be brought up?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Heikola?
I'm wondering if anticipating something, a change in the future for the salon, if the salon decided, for instance, to go out of business, and does a parking agreement still stay in effect if another business came into there? Would the same parking regulations still apply?
May I address that, please?
Yes, if you'd step back the podium.
The agent representing the seller, I mentioned previously that he's talked to that salon owner, and she is considering that very topic, probably looking at a five-year plan, in which case, it is Jerome's position to seek the first right of refusal on purchasing that. So that's limited, but that's certainly an option for Jerome to expand and not have any significant cost of relocating and stuff like that.
Okay. Is there any, yeah, Commissioner Geisler?
Ms. Westervelt, so a shared use agreement would be between two entities at any given point in time. So if the property were vacated, there would be no need for one. However, if a new tenant would arrive, that's when a new shared use agreement would have to be entered into. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have closed the public hearing. Commission, any other thoughts, or do we proceed down the road?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Geisler?
I would like to make a motion in Planning Case nineteen twenty for approval with the following conditions as listed. A revised parking lot layout drawn to scale that eliminates the two parallel spaces in front of the building be provided. If the congregation exceeds seventy-two, additional parking will be installed to comply with the increased parking requirements. Three, in the event of a permanent enclosure, shall be instructed to screen the dumpster and/or recycling containers that complies with city code if the use of a dumpster is there. I would like to add, condition four, the shared use agreement for the parking lot be entered into between the two parties for clarification of the use of the parking. And then, item five, that the conditions requiring improvements to the parking lot and/or trash enclosure be completed by no later than June first, two thousand twenty.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Commission, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Bradley?
A question for legal. Would you suggest we put that, or as staff may determine, and give them some flexibility on the date?
I think you can. If it's not done, staff will usually work with them anyways. I mean, we certainly have deadlines on other issues where, within reason, the staff will still work with them. I don't think that anyone in the city would go to revoke the conditional use permit on June first if it was within reason that it wasn't done. So however, the Commission is more comfortable moving forward, I think, from a legal standpoint, either is fine.
And are we comfortable with that?
I, quite honestly, I'd like to see it, you know, given this, if we want to allow the staff to have some flexibility, I think we actually ought to incorporate that. It's just my thought.
Madam Chair? I would accept the Friday amendment to amend the allowance of staff to adjust that date as needed if they see fit.
So we'll add that to the number, condition five?
Correct.
Is that understood? Does that meet your-
Yes, but then the second should also have to agree to the amendment.
Okay, we have that amended motion with the second on the table. And are we all comfortable with that? And we'll vote?
Chair, could you see clarification?
Yes.
Do we need item four as an amendment, then? If we're giving full discretion to staff, anyway?
Well, item-
As a question?
Yeah, item four was the-
Do we need four, then? Or can we move on without four? Or do we need four?
Well, number four was the shared parking use agreement.
I thought number four was the date.
No, that was number five. Am I clear? I didn't make the motion, but-
Madam Chair, that would be correct, yes. Item four would be a shared use agreement for the parking lot and access between the two occupants.
I misspoke. Number five, then.
There's five, and, so I'm sorry. Say again what your concern was.
The option was to give discretion to staff to decide the date.
And that's the amended-
Which is-
Condition we're making.
My question is, is that, whatever number it is, is it required? That's the question.
I think it is. I'll defer to our attorney.
Madam Chair, I would agree, I would leave it in there. I would leave it in there. The second thing I want to make the Commission aware of is that one of the sergeants has sent me a message indicating they just had a C S O run out to the site, and that there are some no parking signs on that street. So you can't park up and down the entire street, but there are spaces that you can park. So I just wanted to clarify that for the Commission.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So we have five conditions of approval, and we, in that last one, we give some deference to the city staff to work around that June first date if need be.
Madam Chair, can I just ask for clarification on-
Yeah.
Condition number three. So I think the way the motion was made, there was a slight modification to that. I just want to maybe ask Commissioner Geisler to confirm what he intended as it related to number three with the enclosure. If, was it if one was needed?
If one is required per city code. Which does align with the wording, however, to indicate the applicant's express decision to potentially discontinue the use of a dumpster. But however, whatever is complied with city code with respect to external trash storage for a commercial zone.
Okay, so we have the five conditions. Everyone clear on that? And the motion is made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And in Planning Case nineteen twenty, this is a decision by the Planning Commission. An appeal to the City Council would be doable within the ten-day written format rule. Thank you, and good luck to you. Mr. Frenelius, we're wrapping it up, right?
We are, Madam Chair. We're doing well. I was going to go back to my seat, if that's okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I guess we're on to item number five. Plan Case nineteen twenty-four, which is a proposed ordinance amendment related to several sections of Chapter eleven. Originally, when I had reviewed this, I thought, maybe this would be something that would be better for Scott to address. I don't know what the, necessarily what the driver is behind this amendment, although, as I was reading the report tonight, I think I can provide the highlights. It largely is, if you've gone through it, primarily a housekeeping item, I guess, is how I would describe it. So I can briefly touch on what is proposed here, try and address questions. If you want to have more conversation or discussion about it, we can certainly wait until Mr. Harlecker returns. But basically, what this ordinance amendment is intended to do is to correct some inconsistencies in the use tables of the office, commercial, industrial, and port districts. And that inconsistency in that section of the code really relates to how we are using or defining the term for daycare facilities. So that's one issue. Then there's another inconsistency that we've discovered in the port districts, which involves spaces that are left blank in the use table. And we can actually look at that in a moment to kind of see what exactly we're referencing there. But there are two uses that are blank in the port wellness column. We don't know if that was an oversight or if it was intentional, but they were left blank. And there are also references to studios of artists or craft people and limited production and processing. So, again, these are, I think, issues that we've caught over time and thought it would be appropriate to address through a code amendment. As it relates to the daycare facilities, daycare facilities is a use that's defined in Section eleven dash two oh one. However, that term is not used in the use tables for office, commercial district, Section eleven dash seven oh one, and the industrial section. The term that's found in those tables, if you were to look at the code, is childcare center, state-licensed, which is not defined. So we have some issues with that that can create, you know, interpretation questions whenever we, you know, are talking to someone who may be asking about, you know, is a daycare or a childcare facility in allowed use. So what we are proposing to do is to change childcare center, state-licensed, to daycare facility in those two sections. And using that term, daycare facilities, we think eliminates the ambiguities of using that term that's not defined. In the past, we have interpreted daycare facility that includes both childcare, state-licensed, and other daycare as adult daycare as an allowed use. So I think from an interpretation standpoint, we've tried to be consistent, but I think it would be helpful if we just had kind of a universal term. As it relates to the other issue in port wellness, studios of artists or craftspeople, excuse me, hard time pronouncing that, is listed as a permitted use in Ports Riverwalk, Campus Square, and Evergreen. However, it's not listed in port wellness. A similar use, live-work units, is listed as a permitted use in all port districts. And since studios of artists or craftspeople is listed as a permitted use in all those other port districts, we felt it would be appropriate to include it as a permitted use in port wellness as well. With regard to limited production and processing, that's listed as a conditional use in Ports Riverwalk, Campus Square, and Evergreen. However, it's not listed in port wellness. And a similar production, processing uses such as microbrewery, micro-distillery, printing and publishing are all allowed in the port district. So again, I think we're kind of getting into a consistency issue, and so we felt that that should be added to port wellness. If you, I don't know if you have the ordinance itself in front of you. I think all this probably makes a little bit more sense if you look at the use tables. So if you have the ability to pull that up on your attachment, I think I can kind of explain what we're talking about. So, under the draft ordinance, basically, anything that is underlined is new language that we would be adding. Anything that is struck out would be text that we would be removing under this ordinance amendment. So, under this first section, as it relates to principal uses, we're eliminating childcare facilities, and we're replacing it with daycare facilities. And that, again, we're not changing the permitted use designation, but we're just changing that reference. So I don't know if you see that. The other area is under Section two, which is Section eight dash, excuse me, Section eleven eight dash eight oh one point one. This is the list of principal uses- This is the list of principal uses under the industrial classification. We're also adding or changing the definition or the term childcare, state-licensed facility. We're changing that to daycare facility, again, to be consistent. The last section that we're modifying is under Section 11-903.3. Again, this also relates to uses in the port districts that I mentioned. So if you go to that second page, you can see where studios of artists or craftspeople would now be considered a conditional use in port wellness. That was previously left blank. And then, under limited production and processing, that would also be considered a conditional use as it is in the other port districts. So I apologize for that long explanation, but I thought it was worthwhile to provide that clarity. Again, I think by and large, this is mostly a housekeeping clarification to our code to kind of help us from a day-to-day sort of interpretation standpoint. I don't think there are significant policy implications to this, so I'd be happy to answer questions that you might have.
That was an excellent lead-through for us, and Mr. Harlecker, I probably couldn't have done any better. Commission, is there any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Fermanelius, with respect to the studios of artists and craftspeople, that is a permitted use in Riverwalk, Campus Square, and Evergreen. However, it's being labeled as a conditional use in wellness. Is that, is there a specific intent to require approval to go into wellness versus a permitted use across all port districts?
Again, that would be a good background question for Mr. Harlecker. I don't, you know, I don't know why, I'm hoping that's not a typo, that it was intended to be permitted. Let me look here.
The basis of my question being, it seems like we're trying to make the port districts relatively uniform with those intents. That one stands out a little bit, considering the production and processing line item is conditional across all port districts.
So Commissioner Geisler, just to back up, I think that that exhibit is actually wrong, or that, the staff report indicates that since studios or artists is listed as a permitted use in all other port districts, staff is proposing to include it as a permitted use. So I think that's a typographical error. I think that should also be a permitted use. But to answer your question, yes, we want to be consistent. I think that's what you raised.
Yeah, so to that, would staff prefer the opportunity to go back, make sure, tighten this all up, and come back to it in December? Or would you like to mod, would you like an amendment to this motion tonight to move forward with it?
Can it be amended before the City Council addresses it on December 3rd?
I think it could be.
The draft.
I think we could clarify that in your recommendation.
You could amend it tonight.
Yeah, I guess this also requires a public hearing too, by the way, so.
That's right.
We'll need to remember to do that. But we can make that notation and clarification in your motion.
Okay, well, that'll be part of the motion. At this time, I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 19-24 regarding the recommended draft, approval of the draft ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to speak to that draft ordinance, Planning Case 19-24? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And any other, anything else jump out at us here? Commissioner Heikla?
Madam Chair, it may be insignificant, but I'm just wondering, is daycare facility and like a senior care facility, are they, would they both be the same?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, in fact, under our, Commissioner Heikla, under our current code, daycare facility includes a variety of things. So yes, we would treat them as the same thing.
The, under the definition, that's actually defined in the city code?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, daycare facility, okay. So, we have, I guess I need a motion, however, it might be amended, but, so who would like to make that?
Chair Casey, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
In Planning Case 19-24, the Planning Commission recommend approval of the attached ordinance.
We have to have some language in there about, it needs to be amended before it's introduced to the City Council.
Madam Chair, if I can just clarify, so that change relates to Section 11-903.3, under the use table, the current, the draft ordinance that is before you would list studios of artists or craftspeople as a conditional use. That's the draft ordinance, but I believe what your, the motion would be to modify that, to make it a permitted use, which would be consistent with the other port districts, if that makes sense.
That sounds like an amendment to me. And that can be addressed with the whole draft ordinance-
Yes.
-before that introduction.
Correct.
Yeah.
You can make the motion here-
We will make it, yeah.
-pass it with that amendment, and then it will be corrected when it's provided to the City Council.
Okay. So did we have a motion for?
Yep.
Commissioner Knoblock, you made the motion, and that language, can we go with that? Or, Commissioner Geisler?
Madam Chair, we have a current motion that does not contain the amendment. If that is seconded, then we can make an amendment to that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now-
Madam Chair, I would move to amend that motion to contain the following language, that Section 11-903.3, specifically the use table, be modified for the item of studio of artists and craftspeople be changed from a conditional use to reflect a permitted use in port wellness.
And we have a second to that amended motion. So we will be entertaining the amended motion. Does everyone have any discussion about that, or we'll go ahead and move that along? In the, so we'll vote. Didn't even mean to do that.
Sometimes it's just fun.
Right, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. It is a recommendation by the Planning Commission to be introduced at the City Council meeting on December 3rd. And that concludes, we're on to other business, I guess. If there is any, anybody, yeah, other business?
Madam Chair, the last item we have listed here is current development, so I don't have a specific list of items that we would bring before you to your December meeting as we speak. Again, just due to the fact that Scott had to kind of leave on a short notice, so he didn't leave me with the list. I do know that there are plans in for a small retail building on the corner of Main Street in Northdale. He might have reported on this previously, that's the famous Dave's site. So those plans actually came in. So we're evaluating those. I suspect that those will probably be, I'm just guessing that those would be ready for December, but I don't know that for sure.
Would you clarify where that is? You said the Dave's site?
So the famous Dave's location right now-
Yeah.
There's a proposal to essentially take that building down and replace it with two separate retail buildings. A 7,000-square-foot building, which I think would be a multi-tenant retail space, and then a, another building around 3,800 square feet, which I think was anticipated to be a bank.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the, that's one set of plans that are in the hopper. And then, I think there's a preliminary plat out there for a small four-lot subdivision up off of 121st and Osage that I saw in Scott's office, so that's something that we're also working on.
Those might come to our December meeting then?
Yep, yep. That'd be my guess. Other than that, and the other thing I was going to mention, just kind of FYI, is that we did get a letter from the Met Council that the 2040 comp plan, which I know the Planning Commission was involved in, and we're grateful for your input on that, that they approved the document that we submitted. There are some minor things that we need to do to clean that up, and then we have nine months to officially adopt it. So, anyway, I wanted to share that news and thank the Planning Commission again for your help with that really important document.
Thank you. Okay, any, I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and I mean to do this.